Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. We hope that you're staying safe and warm during the snowy day. I will now call our January sixth Mayor and City Council Work Session to order at six P M. Uh, one of our council members has an excused absence and won't be with us today. Today, we have four items to consider and discuss. Our first item on the agenda is for the proposed Charter Amendment number one eighty.
Madam President.
Yes.
Um, you're on mute.
Um.
Or we can't hear you.
Okay.
I can hear.
I can hear.
I can hear.
I hear.
Okay, you can hear me? Okay, good. Okay, perfect. Um, our first item on the agenda is for the proposed Charter Amendment number one eighty to recommend amending Article four hundred of the Charter of the City of Laurel to reflect the dissolution of the Department of Community Resources and Emergency Management, also known as C R E M, to establish two new departments. The Department of Human Services and Emergency Management and amending Section four six nine to reflect Director of the Department of Emergency Management and add Section four seventy, Director of the Department of Human Services. Mayor Keith Sidnor, you now have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Thank you, Madam President. Uh, before I get started on the resolution, I want to take a moment to, uh, thank all the staff, uh, Director Cornwell of France for a great job today assisting the A O C. Uh, Director Wells, Communication Department, getting our social media, uh, presence out. Chief of Police, this police officer. Director Miller of D P W. Director Bailey of Park and Rec. Those are all team efforts and our stakeholders as well. So I just want to take a moment. We're not fully out of the storm yet, though. We got some things, couple small issues might happen today, but we're prepared to deal with that tomorrow as well. Uh, we're gonna be open back up on time by nine o'clock. Our staff will report on time to work. They should be getting, um, the directors to be sending emails out as well. But it was a great team effort, our first snowstorm, and, um, just want to give kudos to all those departments and personnel. And thank your staff in the morning as well. So I'm just gonna go into the resolution. Thank you, Madam President. Um, well, the administration and I reviewed the operation of the Department of Community Resources and Emergency Management and recognized the need to enhance efficiency and the scope of the city's service to better service residents and therefore determine it would be in the best interest to dissolve the Department of Community Resources and create two separate departments. The Emergency Management and the Human Resource and Human Services. The Human Service Department would manage the Craig A. Mo, Laurel Multi-Centered Service Center, Laurel Helping Hands, and other social service programs for the City of Laurel, where the Department of Emergency Management would be responsible for emergency management, preparedness, response, mitigation, and other emergency operations for the City of Laurel. The administration and I propose creating two separate departments to allow the activities and responsibility for each to be better monitored and supervised. The creation of these two separate departments will allow for enhanced security, confidential records, lives of communication, and more effective support, all which allows the city to better service residents and greater Laurel community. So what's gonna, and what I'm proposing now, that each department will have their own department head, the Emergency Management will have the director, and they'll have the assistant director. The Human Services will have a director and a program operation manager, assistant program manager, administration assistant of two, a clinical supervisor, and a Spanish-speaking clinical supervisor. There'll only be eight personnel for this whole department. Six, excuse me, six personnel for the Human Service Department and two personnel for the Emergency Management Department. I will not add any staff, no new staff will be added in the budget. Um, the same, it'd be the same budget we have. The salary will be according right now without a pay increase in a COLA. It's six hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars. There'll be, um, the salary over the next three years, we're almost close to, uh, one, one million, close to two million dollars without the increase in salaries and, um, COLA. Once again, there's no increase in staff, this budget. Uh, every year, we evaluate all departments to see what staff we need. But this department will be operating, the Human Service Department will not be having a deputy director. All the employees here right now, the Helping Hands and the Laurel two oh, employees that are two oh four, the three employees there will be combined under Human Services with no increase in the budget and no, um, no new staff for this fiscal budget. Once again, every year, we evaluate the budget, we evaluate staff, personnel, and but I'm gonna be operating this department without a deputy director. So any questions from the council, I'll take.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Um, are there any questions or comments from the council? Uh, I see your hand. Uh, Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Yeah. Mostly just, just to share a couple of thoughts, uh, running through my mind. Um, first of all, I'm mindful as that Charter Amendment, you know, is one of our weightier types of legislation we can pass, um, and want to be sure we give it a due. I'm also mindful that the multi-service center really represents a new asset in the portfolio of our city and sort of some needed adjustments around that to ensure its success. Um, you know, in my thinking, it's true that we have many sort of multifunction departments, things like Parks and Rec, uh, Budget and Personnel, and Economic and Community Development Departments. Um, but it's also true that, you know, this is a, a sort of a strategic initiative for the city to sort of have this multi-service center um, and the, the plethora of really good things that can be accomplished, you know, through, through that venue. Um, I wanted to thank the mayor for, uh, I know he, he sort of did a, a cost study around the costs and, you know, assured council that, that the outlook for this next fiscal year would be no change to overall costs. And I think that was helpful to have that information. In my mind, it's a, a little bit in, of an interesting byproduct around the remaining, uh, Emergency Management being a two-member department. But certainly, they have proven their worth today and yesterday, sort of this past weekend. Um, but I, I am interested to hear other, uh, thoughts that colleagues have as we make this decision. But I just sort of want to share some of that, that thinking that was run through my head, through my head to the degree it's helpful.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there any additional comments or questions from the council members?
I have a bunch, um, I have a statement, actually. Um, the, um, first of all, Happy New Year, everyone. And, um, I'm, uh, I'm working on fumes right now. I gotta be back at work at nine o'clock tonight, put some more snow. Uh, but Mayor, I, um, and, and the, uh, departments that are in charge of the snow operation, um, very good job, I'm, I want to say. Um, that I, I haven't seen any accidents or anything on our side, um, on the west side. And, and, um, I just wanted to put that out there. Uh, Mayor, I think your idea is great. Um, I think you, uh, I think it should be a, a division, um, s- to, to move strategically, to have, uh, the multi-service center, um, to work at, at a flowing pace and, um, into your, um, into your tenure. Um, and, uh, and success to this idea. That's all I need to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman, Councilwoman Johnson, do you have any input or questions as well?
No questions. I always feel like I'm on the spot to say something, but I do appreciate the, um, mayor sharing with us the, um, need to separate those departments and like, um, big Councilman Simmons mentioned, as we're growing, so it's not just the multi-service center, that's a big portion of it. But just to remind people that it will encompass other services that we may have to provide to the city. So I think it's a really good idea to separate that and have that division. Just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Um, in addition to my fellow council members as well, um, for this proposed Charter Amendment, I have provided my individual input with recommendations and questions to the mayor and city, uh, to understand if there will be the additional financial and staffing needs going forward. But in addition to that, um, as I was out, um, during the holiday season, also had an opportunity to speak with, uh, emergency personnel as well, um, to understand their needs going forward and, um, it was mentioned to me about the multi-service center and asking questions. Um, and they also recommended without any, uh, awareness that, um, this would be a good idea if it was divided as well, just so there could be a specific focus on what each, um, department does. So I wanted to provide that input, too. Um, that's all that I have as far as input. If there are no other questions, um, hearing none, if there are no others. Uh, and if the council has no objections, this item will be placed on the agenda for introduction and first public hearing at our January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, virtual regular mayor and city council meeting at six P M. Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Next, we have Agenda Item number three, Ordinance number two zero three six, an ordinance amending the General Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-four, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and providing an effective date. Director Michelle Saylor, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Um, Ordinance twenty thirty-six, uh, provides funding for the purchase of the property at seventy-seven oh one Sandy Spring Road. Um, this will be a total of six hundred eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars, um, that we will create a property acquisition, um, project in the C I P. Uh, we managed to provide those funds through the use of the undesignated reserves or unassigned fund balance of two hundred thousand dollars. So that, for our purposes, that's recorded as a revenue source. So this is additional revenue adding into the budget, um, with a corresponding expenditure in the miscellaneous financial uses, um, department, if you will, you know, everything that we have in the ordinance is divided into a department-level, um, expenditure total. Um, we also have a transfer of, um, available principal and interest of three hundred eleven thousand, seven eighty-nine. That, too, will be a subtraction from the principal and interest budgets, um, and be part of the five hundred eleven thousand, seven eighty-nine transfer to the C I P. The debt service funds were available because, as you recall, going back to, um, your approval in February, when we participated in the state program, uh, the local government infrastructure financing program. Um, at the time, we took funds that had been budgeted in twenty twenty-three as a transfer to the C I P, but we were able to repurpose those funds into debt service because we knew we planned to do, um, a financing package of some type. So that's where those funds came from. And once all of the calculations were made for the debt service, uh, these funds became available, um, due to the interest rates that were, um, acquired for that process. And additionally, as the money, um, is undrawn, because that it will sit with M and T Bank, we draw down as we do the projects that were funded with those, um, with the money. Um, we are earning interest, um, so we will also have other credits. At any rate, the overall operating budget is only increasing by two hundred thousand dollars because the other transfer is from within the expenditure budget. So then you can see on page three where I'm showing the C I P. Um, we're also taking sixty thousand dollars from the information technology, um, project. Those were funds from the website, the redo of the city's website, which was funded by ARPA money. Um, Ms. Cornwell was able to get approval from the, um, state and federal government that we would be able to use a different category to actually fund the website redo. So it's not that we didn't do the website, it's that we're just swapping out the funding and it wouldn't actually be in the information technology project. Um, because the ARPA money has run mostly through the operating budget on the operating side. The trash capture project, um, these were additional funds that were moved from a remaining balance of a street project that was also funded by ARPA. However, there was an initial, um, allocation through the operating budget with ARPA funds that, um, Mr. Miller and Mr. Holmes have, um, told me that the initial funds will be sufficient to complete the project. That's what the storm grates that are, are providing a collection point for any trash that's in the streets so that it doesn't go into the storm drain. So we're taking that thirty-seven thousand from that project. And so that gives us the six oh eight, seven eighty-nine, but the net change to the C I P is five eleven, seven eighty-nine. And that's all I have, Madam President. If anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Director Saylor. Uh, now I will open up the floor for questions or comments from the council. Uh, Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
On the right button, thank you. Uh, and thank you, Director Saylor, and, and my apologies, wasn't able to, to send any queries in advance just of the timeline we had. But, um, I think I heard you just say, and I think it was very helpful, for the adjustment on the principal, that was due to, uh, the debt, our debt service cost being lower than we had expected it to be, right?
Yes.
I think, I think I understood. Okay, great, great. Thank you. That's good news. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions from the council or comments? Hearing none, and if the council has no objections, this item will be placed on the agenda for introduction and first public hearing at our January thirteenth, virtual regular mayor and city council meeting at six P M. Thank you, Director Saylor.
Thank you.
Moving to Agenda Item number four, Resolution number one dash two zero two five, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to rename and expand the scope of the Citizens Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities. Councilmember Adrian Simmons and Councilmember Christine Johnson, you now have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I appreciate it. And I'll just give a little, um, background history and also ask, uh, fellow Councilmember Johnson to, to chime in, too. Um, folks may be where I was, uh, chaired the, uh, committee, uh, the Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities this last fall and sort of helping to reboot that committee in interacting with the committee as well as interacting with members of the community. Um, a couple of things came about. We did our best to recruit members and we did our best also to sort of reengage members of that committee that had been active prior. We're ending up coming up a little short in terms of the total number we needed to achieve a quorum. But we also heard from the community at large that there are folks that, uh, are, are part of Laurel that, um, may not meet the membership criteria but would be great assets that have expertise, uh, for instance, in the area of persons with disabilities and could really be, um, you know, a great addition to this committee. So the initial impetus was around revisiting, is there a way that we could define the membership criteria to sort of enable them to be a part and to have them leverage, um, as part of that committee? Our goal, you'll see in the language, is that we always want to give first preference to the City of Laurel residents. But if there is someone who, uh, it having, not being able to find enough of those folks, if there were some who had, uh, either a part of a nonprofit, we have so many great nonprofits in the City of Laurel, or business, et cetera, that sort of had experience in working with, uh, persons with disabilities and could chime in, that we'd love to be able to extend an invitation so that they could provide that advice and counsel to the city's, uh, activities on that front. So, uh, that was the impetus. And then I was, uh, joined by Councilwoman Johnson to fold in, um, reaching out to folks, um, in, in the senior citizen community and all of her, like, chiming in for that part.
Thank you, Councilman Simmons. Like you mentioned, I guess he was, you know, working on his end because he had been a member of that committee. So it was great to hear his input, so I thank him for, um, helping with this. And my, um, I guess, heart was for the, um, aging or elderly commit, um, citizens, a population like sixty-five years or over. And one of the, um, ways to assist that was not to necessarily build a new committee and have more members, um, tapped out and being a part of another committee, but taking a committee that we already had, that was a little bit of a struggle, so just kind of expanding that and then expanding it to meet the needs of the aging population. So, um, with the extended scope, because they do have similar, um, needs, not all the needs are the same, we know, of course, but there may be some overlaps. We thought, um, expanding this current committee would add that synergy. And then with expanding the scope to include, um, senior citizens aged sixty-five and older, it would also change the membership to include those represented also. So that was the thought there. There's any questions? We'll be happy to answer those.
Are there any questions, Councilmember Mills? Do you have any questions or comments?
Um, I, well, I think, um, Council, Councilman Simmons said that, um, I, I, I just had a person in mind who, um, had this type of organization to heart, but they're not a part of, um, the City of, City of Laurel. And, um, it, would it be okay to share this information with them? That's my thought.
Y- yes, yeah, absolutely. Obviously, we'll need to go through, you know, the process here in council, um, you know, on, on reviewing a voting, but, uh, definitely, if there's folks that you think can be a great, you know, part of this committee, please do. And, you know, those names can be forwarded to the mayor as well for appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Mayor Sidnor?
Yeah, I just want to, um, I know I tracked some language on the ordinance. I gave it to you, Council President. Were you able to, uh, get it in with the new resolution?
Yes, we did, uh, receive copies of that language over the weekend. And I know Councilwoman, uh, Johnson and I have sort of reviewed it and chatted a little bit together. We haven't been able to sort of get it to a point to make the actual edits to the document. We, but we do expect to be making some, some changes from that. We thank you definitely for your input. And, uh, and I believe also, uh, Pres- President Clark also forwarded some stuff as well. So, um, they have been looked through. We expect to fold things in, um, but it's just not ready for tonight. Yeah.
But thank you. Good job.
Uh, thank you both. Um, and, uh, I would like to thank, uh, Councilmember Simmons and Councilwoman Johnson as well um, for taking the time to, uh, make this, uh, I would say, committee more robust. Um, it was a pleasure for me serving for two terms prior to being elected on this committee with former councilmember, uh, Valerie Nicholas. And, um, I know how important it is. Um, for this, um, I provided recommendations in regards to the age. Um, after, uh, choosing to speak with a Health Equity and Diversity Officer, just to ensure, um, that any recommendations I made, um, were proper and equitable for all. Um, also recommended, uh, adjustments, slight adjustments on the naming of the committee just to be, uh, more encompassing of individuals. I think I recommended as well, um, the age, which, uh, the officer mentioned usually starts around fifty or fifty-five, so, uh, I know Mayor Sidnor and I also recommended that as well as some other adjustments and recommendations from the Health and Equity Officer as well. So thank you to you both, um, for working on this and definitely look forward to talking about this more.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes. Are there any more comments or questions from the council on this? Nope. All right, hearing none. And if the council has no objections, this item will be placed on the agenda for introduction and first public hearing at our January thirteenth, virtual mayor and city council meeting at six P M. Councilmember Mills, do you have something, an additional comment? I'm sorry. I think you're on mute.
I do. Yeah, I, um, I was just wondering, um, before it went up for the next meeting, would the language have to be changed prior to that meeting?
Yes, so, um, from my understanding, Councilmember Simmons and Councilwoman Johnson, they're going to take time to review this and to incorporate any additional changes that they, uh, may see fit or would like to send back to us. If you have any comments or questions that you would like to send to them, please feel free to email them as well.
Okay, will do. Because I just wondered, the, the age, I wanted to, um, make sure that I was able to, to refer proper information once I sent it out.
Absolutely. Please, yeah, you can, you can definitely, uh, feel free to email Councilmember Simmons and Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you. Will do.
You're welcome. Thank you. So for the last item of the evening, Agenda Item number five is Resolution number two dash two zero two five, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council authorizing the purchase of seven seven oh one Old Sandy Spring Road in Laurel, Maryland for the purpose of acquiring real property for city operations. Mayor Sidnor, you now have the floor.
I thank you, Madam President. Um, the city has desired to purchase real property in the city to enhance business and operations for the purpose of serving certain needs of the public Recreation and Public Works Department. The city has been made aware of a post-sale property located at seventy-seven oh one Old Sandy Spring Road, Laurel, Maryland, two zero seven zero seven. Included existing house with two gar- two garage, um, lifts has been determined that, um, one-third acre of property is large enough to provide overflow parking for city fleet and equipment warehouse, another dedicated garage for mounted equipment maintenance. The city has an appraisal of the property conducted and negotiated with the owner of the property and determined the price of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars was a fair market value for the property. The city is negotiating the contract at first of the property operating purposes for the sale to exceed, not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the contract being reviewed and recommended approved by the city's listing and mayor. So, uh, this is a project, like I said before, um, that the park and recreation has grown and they need more space. And this building is right next door to the facility we have right now. And this would be a great asset for us to have, uh, enhance the services of our D P W and our park recreation. And we ask for the council approval for this when we go to the dead, uh, when it opens here. So, any questions you may have, um, staff and I is ready to answer those questions.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Um, I see that Councilmember Mills has a question.
Yes, I, um, I was just wondering, as far as with that, with that usage, um, looking at the property, it, it seems pretty narrow. And, um, I know, talking previously about this property and, and what, you know, what we had in mind to use it for, but I was just wondering if this property could possibly, uh, with the perch, with the purchase of this property, could it be used as a multi-purpose property? Um, we've been talking many years ago within the city, uh, about like a no-kill shelter. Doesn't have to be a big, big, um, piece of property. Um, but I was just wondering if, you know, we can consider using a portion, maybe the house or a portion of the property to, to start that process here in the City of Laurel. And, um, um, that's my thoughts with that piece of, with that purchase of property.
Yeah. Uh, thank you for your question, your concerns, Councilman Mills. At this particular time, no, we would not be using it for the no, uh, the no-kill animal shelter. Um, that would require more detail with, uh, hiring more personnel and twenty-four-hour shifts of that nature. So that's something I did talk to the committee about, uh, when I first came on as the mayor. Uh, we have not given up on that, but we came up with an approach with our Director Cornwell. There is a, a regional approach. We rather partnership with the northern region of the county, like Greenbelt, North Brentwood, Hyattville, and all of us, uh, chip in to get a, a no-kill, um, shelter on the northern end of the county. So that's where we at with that right now. I think that's the best idea for us right now because it would be costing more money to the city to have it, uh, separated by ourselves. So, but for this property right now, sir, we're not be using it for that, um, for anything other than what D P W and the park and recs needed for overflow parking lot and for the things I've mentioned into the, in the resolutions.
Thank you.
Mister Bailey, if you want to chime in, um,
Thank you.
And you can as well. Director Bailey, you know, chime in, anything you want to add to it.
I don't see.
Well, sir, Mr., uh, Mr. Mayor, you're, you're correct, and
Sir, Mr., uh, Mr. Mayor, you're, you're correct. And if I understand it right, I think that animal no-kill shelter required, uh, minimum two acres of land uh, for the outreach and the runs for the dog kennels and things like that. But our anticipation for this piece of property is to use it as overflow parking, as you said, for all the equipment and maintenance needs that are right now that both our lot, the parks and rec, uh, lot and the public works lot is just busting up the seams with, um, you know, not, not available for any additional, uh, vehicles. And if so, then we have to double park them. And it's just the constant moving things around. Uh, we feel like we can allow for some parking and overflow equipment use like tractors and trailers that would clean up our yards and allow it to be more, um, active use for our, our better equipment. Um, we would also look at asphalting the, um, the grass areas so that the equipment and trucks and all wouldn't get stuck in the current, um, in grass and all as they, as you see it now. Uh, we had talked about, um, uh, getting, uh, demoing the house piece so that we could open the land up even more, allowing for more overflow, uh, equipment use, trucks, vehicles, trailers, tractors. The backyard, as you know, already has a two-guard garage in the back with a lift that we're very excited about because it, it is a, a full-use functional lift that we could use, um, for, you know, parks and recommend, uh, machinery, but also allow the parks or public works facility, uh, it works great that if their property should, uh, be condemned or have a problem down there that they could move their, some of their, most of their equipment over and use that garage as well as their makeshift, um, lifting garage until their, uh, main ones get up and running again. So it works out with the COOP program that the, uh, both, uh, Parks and Recreation and Public Works could utilize, and it would benefit both in that sense. And I think also the police department might be able to move a vehicle or two over there as well. Uh, because I think if we lay this out right, we should be able to get a lot of, uh, vehicles and equipment out there and utilize the space, you know, to its fullest.
Thank you so much, Director Bailey, for answering that. I see Councilmember Simmons may have a question as well.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam President. Actually, just to sort of add in for, for folks who might be learning about it as well, one of the things I don't think we mentioned quite yet is that is a contiguous piece of property to an existing Laurel property. So there's a little bit of an advantage that, um, we're not spreading out into an entirely new location, but we can simply just widen an existing location, which makes it easier for city staff. I think that's something certainly going for it. Um, and then the thinking as well, which we've alluded to is as some of the, you know, residences grow, you know, having uh, ability to serve that expanded need going forward. Um, I know we, we spent some time looking at some of the numbers and, you know, certainly there's some, some room with this way or that, but, uh, definitely, I think it is an opportunity that I'm glad that we're considering.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Uh, Councilmember Mills, do you have an additional comment or question?
Yes, for Director Miller, I, I was just wondering, um, good evening, actually, Director Miller. Um, is, do you all like work on your equipment, uh, already?
Um, I get, that's for me, I assume. So yes, we work on all of our, uh, mowers and equipment in-house. We do that ourselves. Uh, Public Works takes care of all the vehicles and the, uh, the tractors, the big equipment. So right now, all of our, uh, riding mowers, push mowers, stand-on mowers, uh, any of that type of mower equipment, um, our, uh, slope mower, things like that, we work on at our, at our facility by ourselves. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think the, um, I mean, to have that garage down there, I mean, eh, anybody would love that.
Yes, sir.
You know, so I, um, I, 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 that was one aspect of, you know, um, of the property that I, that I really liked. And, um, you know, I, I like to see the, um, like the layout of, um, you know, what, uh, what you all would like to do with that property. Yeah. Yep. And it has a fence, uh, it does have a fence though. So, but I'm pretty sure you probably would, you know, along, because it's right beside the house. So, yeah, I'm pretty sure that probably all of that would go along with the grass and just do a, um, overlay of an asphalt map down there on it, huh?
Yeah, that's what I, uh, what we're looking at. We would push back. That fence that's there now is a, uh, a wooden fence, a six-foot wooden fence. So we would replace that with our, um, uh, vinyl, uh, coating fence with, um, the barbed wire that we put on last year to protect all the vehicles when we were having the, um, um, issues with the catalytic converters being stolen from our lots. We added the barbed wire around, uh, Public Works, our facility, the back of our Robert J. DePietro Center, anywhere where we had a vehicle, we had that. So we would push back, uh, push out on our, on the existing property where, as much as we can, add, uh, uh, the fence, the, um, wire fence with barbed wire. And then we would also look at, um, um, any mechanical gates in the front or, you know, we haven't laid it out that much, you know, yet. So either a mechanical gate in the front that or use the existing, uh, gates on our side of the, but Mr. Sims is right that it's right to our properties, adjacent to our property. This would be a big score to, to get this property to add to our existing property now and allow for more expansion for, uh, all the departments.
Okay. Now, I got, I got one for you though. With this, with this no-kill shelter, that dog can be protecting that property.
Maybe so, but he would be inside and we need him outside where it would be protected.
Thank you, Director Miller.
You're welcome.
All right. Um, thank you so much, Director, uh, Director Miller, Director Bailey, um, and Mayor Sidnor. We appreciate you moving very quickly on this, um, for the city. Are there any additional questions or comments in regards to resolution number two dash two zero two five? All right. Well, hearing none, and if the council has no objections, this item will be placed on the agenda for introduction and first public hearing at our January thirteenth virtual regular mayor and city council meeting at six P M. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. As a reminder, we will have our next regular mayor and city council meeting virtually on Monday, January thirteenth at six P M. All are welcome to attend. Remember, please be safe as our streets continue to be cleared from our overnight snow. Thank you, Councilmember Mills, for taking the time to put effort in and keeping our streets safe. We hope to see you soon at our next event. For more information on future meetings and events, please visit cityoflaurel.org and follow us on social media. With no further business to come before the mayor and city council, this meeting is now adjourned. Have a great night.